Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible and liberate, unity and justice.
Let's call this Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Bosso?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Smartendale?
Here.
Mr. Schreiner?
Here.
Mr. Caldwell?
Here.
Now, we'd like to adopt tonight's agenda. Do you have a motion for that?
So move Schreiner.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, additions, corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schreiner? Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
On board docs and available our minutes from last our meeting from last month, can you get a motion to adopt those?
Salute.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Any board reports tonight? Right. Hearing none. They're moved to public participation relative to agenda items. Anyone sign it? No. All right. We'll move on to our legislative report, liaison report. Vice President, Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you, President Caldwell. Much happening these days at the State House. Not all good. I will highlight a few of the eight pages that will be in the minutes, unless you want me to read all of them. First of all, ODE, the Ohio Department of Education Reform Bill passes the Senate. The Ohio Senate passed Senate Bill One by a vote of twenty-six to seven. The bill would rename the Department of Education as the Department of Education and Workforce, and would create the position of Director of Education and Workforce. The bill also would reform the functions and responsibilities of the State Board of Education and the Superintendent of Public Education. The bill was amended in the Senate Education Committee to include a stakeholder engagement process, requires the deputy directors to have relevant educational, professional, or managerial experience, and makes changes to the implementation date. The companion bill in the Ohio House is House Bill Twelve and mirrors the language of Senate Bill One. The House Primary and Secondary Education Committee has held three hearings on the bill and has included the same amendments that were added to Senate Bill One. Testimony in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee is expected to continue over the next few weeks. House priority bills look to reform property taxation and income tax rates as well. Speaker Jason Stevens announced the list of priority bills on February fifteenth, including House Bill One, sponsored by Representative Adam Matthews. The bill pertains to income and property taxes and would do the following: repeals the graduated income tax rates that apply to non-business income and instead levies a flat tax rate of three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents plus two point seven five percent on all income over twenty-six thousand; decreases from thirty-five percent to thirty-one point five percent, the percentage of real property values that is subject to taxation; indexes that thirty-one point five percent rate so that it decreases in proportion to the increase in inflation; repeals the ten percent tax rollback on non-business property; modifies the two point five homestead tax rollback to equal a flat one hundred and twenty-five property tax credit for all owner-occupied homes; it establishes an enhanced homestead exemption for certain long-term homeowners who qualify for the general homestead exemption; it indexes for all homestead exemptions the amount of the exemption so that the exemption and resulting tax savings increases in proportion to the increase in inflation. I knew that would excite people. So I'll move on to the Legislative Service Commission, provided a fiscal analysis on the bill that showed the significant loss in revenue to the state's general revenue fund. Additionally, school districts and local taxing authorities would also see a decrease in funding received from local property taxes. This includes both inside and outside village. Total revenue loss at the state and local level would be in the billions of dollars. The analysis shows the impact the bill's provisions would have on school districts regarding loss of revenue, but also shows how the constitutionally required tax reduction factors known as nine-twenty would work in the reverse and increase property taxes. Dr. Howard Fleeter, a consultant with the Ohio Education Policy Institute, provided a summary and analysis of the bill. The summary dives into the complexity of school funding and shows how House Bill One will specifically impact school districts. The House Ways and Means Committee is planning on additional hearings in the next few weeks. The House Finance Subcommittee on Primary and Secondary Education will be holding hearings for public testimony on House Bill Thirty-three, the biennial budget, next week. Hearings will occur this week on Tuesday, March fourteenth, and Wednesday, March fifteenth, as well as Thursday, March sixteenth, at ten a.m. And finally, I just thought that I would point out one new bill that is being proposed, the House Health Provider Services Committee. The committee held sponsored testimony on House Bill Forty-seven, sponsored by Representatives Richard Brown and Adam Byrd, which would require the placement of automated external defibrillators, AEDs, in each public and chartered non-public school and each public recreational facility. Mr. President, that concludes my report this evening. Please see the minutes for the entirety of this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. Next, we'll have our student and staff achievement report from Ms. Martindale.
Thank you. So we've got four really exciting things to report on tonight. First of all, congratulations to Central Crossing High School, Grove City High School, Franklin Heights High School, who competed in the third annual Central Ohio Mini-Bridge Building Competition in February. This was the first time that students were able to build their bridges on site at the Franklin County Engineers' Main Office within a three-hour timeframe. Through the competition, students were able to gain valuable experience in teamwork, time management, and networking. I also want to say a great big huge congratulations to Grove City High School Competition, to the leading teams. If we have a few, possibly one currently in the crowd. These teams qualified for the state championship after competing at Southwest Regionals in February. In addition to their state championship success, each team also competed recently in the OCC Championship on February nineteenth. Large Game Day took fourth overall in the OCC and first in the Ohio Division, while the NTNB took second overall in the OCC. So congratulations to Greyhound. And then we've got Grove City High School, Central Crossing High School, and Franklin Heights High School gymnastics teams that recently competed in the district gymnastics tournament. District Sportmanship Award winners from each school are Savannah Gullian from Franklin Heights, Sophie Knapper from Central Crossing, Madison Harding from Grove City, and the district scholar athlete is Grove City High School senior Emma Weaver. So huge congratulations to those ladies and their respective teams on outstanding performances. And then my last one to mention here is congratulations to Grove City High School Symphony Orchestra for earning a superior rating at the recent OMEA State Orchestra Contest, the ensemble performed original works, and in the most advanced class, and earned the highest rating from all adjudicators. Since two thousand and nine, that orchestra has earned the top rating and top class each year of this contest, an accomplishment matched only by one other orchestra program in the state of Ohio. These are four really awesome things. I'm so excited to share tonight in this report. And then I do have two things also to mention. And our Southwestern City School District gives back earlier this month. Galloway Ridge Intermediate School Student Council members visited a Franklin County Dog Shelter, delivered treats, blankets, and toys to our four-legged friends who were weight adoption. So thank you for the generous and caring hearts of those students. And then last month, Jackson Middle School National Junior Honor Society collected two hundred and fifty-five toiletry and personal care items from the Royal McDonald House as a part of their NJHS service project. Very excited to share all of that really great things going on that wrapped up.
Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Next, we'll move to our items for action, fiscal and operational management. Mr. Bosso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under fiscal and operational management, this evening we have ten items for action. The first will be the revised appropriations for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, exhibit X one. Let's recommend the Board of Education approve the revised appropriations. Item number two, the investment in financial statements for February two thousand and twenty-three, exhibit X two and X three. It's recommended that in accordance with Section one three five point one four of the Ohio Revised Code, that the Board of Education approve February investments and cash positioning report for the month of February two thousand and twenty-three as submitted. Total investments, three hundred and forty-four million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Interest earnings month-to-date will be seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Total earnings year-to-date, four million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Interest rates vary from point one six zero to four point seven five percent. Item number three is the payment of bills, exhibit X four. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of bills according with the list of checks for the month of February two thousand and twenty-three. Item number four, donations, exhibit X five. It's recommended the Board of Education accept the donations of eight thousand, one hundred and six dollars and forty-three cents as detailed and authorize letters of appreciation to all the donors. Donations are always appreciative here at the Southwestern City School District. Thank you. Item number five, authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section fifty-seven oh five point four one of the Higher Revised Code. Exhibit X six, it's recommended the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay the bills for February, which were not processed with, in accordance with Section fifty-seven oh five point four one of the Ohio Revised Code. Item number six is a master service agreement with Meta Solutions. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the master service agreement with Meta Solutions to provide informational technology services from January, or July, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four, exhibit X seven. Meta Solutions has provided three basic services for the districts for decades. These services are state software, fiscal support, hosting, educational management, informational system support, and reporting, purchasing, co-op membership. This will be used tonight in one of our items for the school bus purchases that we are having. Item number seven, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the county Budget Commission as presented, exhibit X eight. This is the annual requirement to accept assessed values and tax rates that have been voted upon in our district. This is a checks and balance process to make sure the county auditor and the districts agree on information provided. Item number eight, which will be the college credit plus moratorium of understanding memorandum. I'm sorry, memorandum of understanding with the Columbus State Community College. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the attached college credit plus memorandum of understanding with the Columbus State Community College for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. That'll be exhibit X nine. College Credit Plus is initiative that allows school district to partner with the higher educational institutes to provide students with college credit while still in high school. Item number nine, the resolution accepting the bid and awarding a contract to Cardinal Bus Sales and Services for the purpose of the school buses. It's recommended the Board of Education accept the bids as organized by the Meta Solution for eight eighty-four passenger school buses, one seventy-eight passenger conventional gasoline school bus, one forty-eight passenger with lift diesel school bus, and four forty-eight passenger lift gasoline school buses at a total cost of one million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. These buses will also be equipped with fourteen radio mounting systems for a total of five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-two cents and fourteen digital video systems for the total of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and six cents. The district does consistently budget a portion of the funds for the permanent appropriation levy that was passed back in two thousand and five for these bus purchases. The target is always to replace ten to twelve buses each year to keep the fleet strong. After reviewing these nine items, Mr. President, I move them per passage.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Three of us second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on these items? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Next, we'll go to items per.
Still.
So yeah.
Help you out. One item that we have to vote on separately under fiscal and operational management is approval of the resolution filed complaints against valuation of property taxes for the year two thousand and twenty-two. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution as presented, exhibit X seven. A lot of these were voted on last month. Some more came. Preacher Gillis have sent these over to us for a vote. Each property owner has been notified, but from the U.S. Postal Service, that's the resolution we presented tonight for a vote on this. As I said at the last meeting, property values that have been sold and they jive with the evaluation of the auditor, they pop up and they go to see if those properties are really worth what they are. So after reviewing this item, Mr. President, I move it first through.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a second?
Second.
Schreiner?
Any discussion on this side? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosso? Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale? Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Next, items for action under policy. We have.
Thank you, President Caldwell. We have one policy this evening. It's the first reading of a revised policy, fifty-four thirty point zero one, graduation recognition. Having reviewed this, I'll move it for passage.
Do we have a second?
Second, Schreiner.
Any discussion on this? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Next, items for action. Break them.
Thank you. The first item this evening is the accrual of the K-12 school fee schedule for the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It is unchanged from this year. And second are the paid participate fee schedule for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. And that you know we have reduced those fees by half, and they're shown in the attachments in the agenda. Having reviewed these, I'm moving to passage.
Do we have a second?
Do we?
Any discussion on this side?
I will say, you know, this is kind of a compromise we came to. I'd like to get rid of them all the way, but I think as a board, we came to talk about this, came to loosen just because it happened again. So I think it was a.
So the actual reduction is seventy-five percent of the original.
Yeah, originally.
Good point. Every year since, I think this is our third consecutive year, we've reduced them by fifty percent. Two years ago, fifty percent a year ago, fifty percent this last year, and now for next year, we'll be reducing those paid participate fees by seventy-five percent. So seventy-five percent. Any other discussion on that?
Just to remember that those students can also apply for financial help through foundation success beyond the classroom.
Roll call? Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yeah.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
All right. Next, items for action. Facilities. Go ahead, Mr. Bosso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under just school development, we've got two items for action. The first is resolution to award a contract to replace the partitions at Buckeye Woods and Dartmouth Elementary Schools. The Board of Education, Southwest City Schools advertised leads out on March seventh to replace the partition walls and doors in the building, masonry walls and solid doors to improve air quality, security in classrooms, replace partitions and common spaces with partitions of clean surfaces. The project design team at Shore, Score Architects Incorporated, conducted a post-bid review of the parent low bid submitted by Two K General Company Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Score Architecture recommended the award of the contract to Two K General Company Incorporated based on its total bid of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The district was estimating this project to be lower than a million, so it came in a little under Mark Meadows said. So that's a good thing. Maybe things are coming down. Score also recommended a ninety-two thousand dollars in available for unseeable items that owner requests changes during this construction for this project. After reviewing this item, Mr. President, I move it for passage.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, Schreiner.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yeah.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Next, items for action, student, school, and community.
I do have one. I'm sorry. I should have read both of them.
I went past.
I put you in the squad. It wasn't my fault.
I'm new here.
Aren't we all? All right. The other item I shouldn't have said, sorry, Anthony's resolution authorized the approval amended the professional design service agreement with Score Architecture Incorporated Southwest City School District as a project under the American Rescue Plan. The project will be the family head start building intended to be constructed near the Styles Elementary School facility, and it will allow students to, at the facility, to have more classroom space, to better social distance, and have rooms needed to learn in an environment of safety. The purpose of this family head start, it's considered to be the district S R Fund project eligible funding through the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Relief Fund. If anybody doesn't know that building over there, I mean, I wouldn't even know if you call it a building. Like three modular units. I think if you looked at any of our buildings in our district, this is one that definitely needs replaced. Like I said, therefore, the resolution with Southwest City Schools of Education in Franklin County, state of Ohio, it's recommended that this is awarded to the Score Architecture to increase the amount and do all the site work and architectural fees in the amount of five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And it's great that this is going to be S R dollars we can use to get this project off the ground. After reviewing this item, I move it for passage. Second, Schreiner. I'll keep it consistent.
That's right. Yeah. So just a little on the boards where we're going to be voting on both items as one, because we missed. So you, so we're going to vote on both items as one. So roll call, please. Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yeah.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to items for action, schools, community, and students. Ms. Martindale?
Just have one item. We've got the Business Professionals of America students and they provided the opportunity to go to Anaheim, California. They hold a card on April twenty-fifth and return on the thirtieth. They will miss four days of school. Students are going to be traveling by airplane and taking it to Hilton in Shanghai. And all of these things is the pay by the career type. Having reviewed these items.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call? Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Now, personnel report, Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you, President Caldwell. On the board agenda for this evening are seven personnel items involving one hundred and fifty-nine persons. This includes six certificated and administrative resignations, two administrative employments, fifteen certificated changes in employment status, sixty-nine certificated employments, fourteen classified resignations, twelve classified changes in employment status, and forty-one classified employments. After reviewing these action items, I move them now for passage at this time.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion on person? Hearing done? Roll call? Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Now, we'd like to call Dr. Hayward up. I think we have some guests in the room that we want to welcome. Well, they're not really guests. They're part of our family.
Good evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garci, and board members. It is my pleasure to share the two administrative employments on the board agenda this evening. Betsy Ketchum began her employment in our district in August of two thousand and three. Since then, she has served the students in Southwestern City School District as a Spanish teacher at Central Crossing High School for fourteen years, the assistant principal at Pleasant Field Middle School for three years, and the principal at Norton Middle School for the past three years. Betsy has accepted the principal position at Park Street Intermediate School beginning in the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to the members of our board, as well as Dr. Wise, Dr. Lusher. Thank you so much. I'm very excited at this new opportunity. Been in this district for twenty years, and I'm eager to finish out the school year at Norton and ready to move over to Park Street. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.
Dr. Chad Clark came to Southwestern City School District from Westerville City Schools in August of two thousand and fourteen. He has served as assistant principal at Buell Park Middle School and most recently Buell Park Middle School for nine years. Beginning with the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Dr. Clark will serve the students at Buell Park Middle School as their principal. Dr. Clark? His parents and family is fine.
Thank you so much, members of the board, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garci, and our administrative team. I'm just excited to keep the ball rolling at Buell Park Middle School. It's a great school, a great new space, and thank you very much once again for that. I think I've said that so many times, but I'll keep saying it. Thank you. So, and I've just been looking forward to starting the year as the principal of Buell Park Middle School. Thank you.
We appreciate you all coming tonight. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're more than welcome to if you'd like to. But it's good to have you. All right. Next, we're going to move to public participation relative to non-agenda items. Of course, this can be Mr. Bob Ruth. For all of our speakers tonight, you'll have five minutes of speak at four minutes, your hill or your tone, and then the second tone will be your time.
Public education in Ohio is under attack by right-wing extremists in the state legislature and on our own Southwestern Board of Education. These fringe radicals don't really believe in broad-based public education. Instead, they want to use billions of taxpayer dollars to finance religious charter and other private schools at the expense of our own southwestern schoolchildren. Many of these anti-public education extremists are running for school boards throughout Ohio. When successful, they attempt to sabotage the very institution, public education, that they were elected to protect. In my opinion, two of these anti-public school saboteurs have been elected to the Southwestern Board of Education. These two and their extremist allies use disinformation and scare tactics to undermine parents' confidence in southwestern schools. They falsely claim LGBTQ kids are taking over our schools and boys en masse are invading girls' restrooms. The intentions of these two school board radicals became clear, in my opinion, last August when they voted against a lawsuit challenging the state legislature's increase in taxpayer-financed vouchers for private schools. The aim of this much-needed lawsuit is simple, fight against wrong-headed proposals like House Bill eleven, the so-called Backpack Bill now being promoted by the Speaker of the Ohio House and other radical right-wing legislative leaders. Unfortunately, House Bill eleven is expected to be enacted during this legislative session. House Bill eleven would have three terrible effects, in my opinion. First, it would siphon off more than one billion dollars. Let me repeat that, one billion, B as in boy, taxpayer dollars each year from public schools and give it to religious charter and other private schools. Second, it would hand millions of tax dollars, our tax dollars, to scam artists. I'm sure everyone here has read or heard about E C O T, White Hat, and other for-profit charter schools in Ohio. While our property taxes keep increasing, these immoral profiteers with support of corrupt state legislators become millionaires by creating failed charter schools. Well, guess what, folks? If House Bill eleven is enacted by the legislature, we can expect taxpayer-financed charter schools owned by ripoff artists who again proliferate in Ohio. And the two radical members of us of the southwestern school board have, in effect, allied themselves with a political hacks in the state legislature. These greedy state legislators repeatedly have sold their souls and their principles, if they had any to begin with, for campaign contributions from charter school profiteers. The third terrible effect of House Bill eleven would give our tax money, you've got to believe this, would give our tax money to wealthy families so they can send their kids to hoity-toity private schools. That's right, folks. Our tax dollars will allow rich kids from districts like New Albany and Upper Arlington to attend exclusive private schools on our dime, House Bill eleven. Yet despite all this, the two extremist members of our own southwestern school board voted against the lawsuit aimed at fighting these outrageous abuses. It's time to forget about private school kids from the rich suburbs, folks. Instead, start standing up for our kids, the ones who attend southwestern public schools. If the two radical extremists on this board want to represent rich private school kids, they should move to New Albany or Upper Arlington and leave the rest of us alone. Thank you.
Next, we'll have David Donatario.
Good evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Shriner, members of the board, Dr. Wise and Mr. Garci. Thank you so much for your time this evening. First of all, I wanted to thank you for following the district policy recently at Westland High School regarding textbooks and items in our libraries. I'm repping Westland tonight. There was a situation at Westland High School where one staff member decided to by themselves pull certain items off of the shelves without following the district policy. By the end of the day, that was rectified. And so I wanted to remind everyone in the audience that there are policies and procedures to review certain curriculum, textbooks, items that are available in the district. And so I want to thank Westland and Southwestern for following that policy. In addition, there are district policies available and procedures. If a parent chooses to not have their student read a certain text, there can be alternative texts often offered that will still be aligned with the curriculum. And so there's also a policy for that, both of which policies do not require us changing what is in the school libraries. And so I wanted to point out this really good article I came across from nineteen ninety, believe it or not, that still hearkens true today, written by Rooting Sumbs Bishop from the Ohio State University entitled Mirrors, Windows, and Sliding Glass Doors. Really good article here, but it essentially says this, that we have books in our district that are mirrors and we have windows. The mirrors are ones that reaffirm who we are, our own life experience. They reflect our own values, perhaps, our own individual culture, our own families, our own faith. And then there are windows. These windows are pieces of literature that affirm and educate us about other cultures, other fates, other ways of doing things, even other periods of history. They open up windows to us and in instances such as these, which are, in my view, the role of education is to enlighten us and is to make us aware of experiences that are different than our own. And so when we review pieces of literature like this, they are not pushing agendas. They are instead offering us windows to better understand people who are different than ourselves. They offer opportunities for us to grow in respect for those who may disagree and at least see where they are coming from. And if we are truly strong enough in our morals and values, we will not be shaken simply by reading one text or going to one class. In fact, in many instances like this in my own education, it reaffirmed who I was. It reaffirmed my values and things that my parents instilled in me. So I say all of this to say that what may be said in the media and certain people's claiming that because there is a certain book or a certain lesson plan or a certain course, that that's pushing an agenda. I would argue that it is indeed the very foundation of education for us to enlighten kids, for us to give them windows into the experiences of the many other diverse kids in our district. Perhaps grow, learn something, respect one another, and move forward together in this beautiful, big, diverse district that we share. So thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have Brian Weaver.
Thank you, School Board, and Dr. Wise, giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Brian Weaver. I'm a former Grove City IT staff for City of Grove City. And I'm also a disability advocacy for people with disabilities. I I'm still waiting for the author for Mr. Bosso. He offered to go out with coffee to learn more about disability and concerns I have at the school. So I'm still waiting for Mr. Bosso on that. And I've sent numerous emails in the past since two thousand and eighteen regarding disability advocacy and concerns I've seen happening in Southwest School District as a former IT staff working for law enforcement and seeing incident that happened in law enforcement regarding to Southwest School District and trafficking. I also had two parents contact me, one from Perry, Lincoln, Norton, saying that her daughter with the seven-year-old daughter was being bullied. Instead of taking care of the problem, the principal Blair, I can't remember her last name, in the Southwest City School Board did nothing to assist us, assist her. And she ended up moving outside of the district and took her school out, took her child out of school. I also had another mother at Central Crossing who was a special needs student. I believe it was in two thousand and eighteen or nineteen. And she said that her daughter was being bullied and she would, the parent and the student would come in at three o'clock to watch a video of the incident and they came in three o'clock and the video was not there. And again, that mother and child decided to move out of the school district because of Southwest administration and the school administration refused to assist people with disabilities and bullying. Now, in relation to former IT staff for City of Grove City in two thousand and fifteen, you're well aware of your former Norton Middle School teacher Ben Retain was sexually molesting a thirteen-year-old girl for the past five years, three, four times a week, annually and vaginally. And Mr. Retain was in Grove City Police Department for a two thousand and fifteen trafficking involved incident. And I believe the police department will not provide a video of the incident. I've also asked the Southwest School Board numerous times since two thousand and nineteen for public record regarding any knowledge of this incident, and I've not gotten any response from anyone on the school board, Southwest School Board. Well, so I inquire you to investigate further with City of Grove City Police. As shortly after this incident in two thousand and fifteen, the chief resigned. The phone chief had resigned. Actually, after Mr. Retain was arrested in December twenty twenty-one, Chief Rusko resigned three weeks after that incident. Chief Pearson transferred to Hilliard Police Department. Mr. Retain walked by, tossed a chain with an employee at City of Grove City Police Department in two thousand and fifteen. And after this incident, she became an employee with Franklin County Prosecutor's Office, and she is now Canada Police Department Administration Assistant. Mr. Retain's mother is Lieutenant Jeff Wallace, Grove City Police Assistant. And after this incident, Mr. Lieutenant Jeff Wallace transferred and became Canada Police Chief. You can ask the following individuals that are still employed at City of Grove City Police Department that witnessed this trafficking involved incident. And Mr. Retain inside the police department for investigation. Lori Grinner, she's the public records clerk. Lori Retain. Ashley Retain, Kelly Davidson. And they are lots. So they are lots of IT managers actually download the video of Mr. Retain and Grove City Police Department. And I personally saw the video. Mr. Retain was wearing a black hat, white lining, black shirt. He walked and he came through the back door and led him by his mother, Lori Retain, who was Lieutenant Assistant. So I ask you to please investigate Grove City Police Department at eighty percent of all programs have resigned in Grove City since two thousand and eighteen to cover numerous child sex crime, trafficking, and drug crime incidents, as all the records have been deleted from the crimebacking.com website. Thank you for your time.
Let's hear your ear from Jen Belt.
Evening. Thanks for having us. My name is Jen Belt, and I'm a parent of two fantastic children who are receiving wonderful education with Southwestern City Schools. The reason I've asked to speak tonight is to thank you for putting proper procedures and policies in place when concerns arise about books that are chosen for our school classrooms and libraries. And I thank you for following those procedures and policies as they've been written. As a parent of two kids in middle school, I would like to also speak on the matter of trust. I emphatically trust teachers and educators to stock our school shelves with quality books that enrich children's lives. I trust their judgment and their ability to curate a collection of reading material that will help our kids fall in love with learning. I trust their extensive training and knowledge of childhood literacy and believe that they are always seeking to choose age-appropriate books that are designed to inspire our kids to read more, create more, and develop a feeling of empathy and connection with others that are not like them. I trust in their unique ability to choose books that will enhance every student's school experience in the very best way. I trust that they actually care about kids, all kids. With the current spirit of policing the shelves of our school libraries and classrooms, I'm bothered by the very sudden lack of trust in our educators to make good choices for our kids. When it comes to books, educators have one goal, getting students to read. To achieve this goal, the shelves are stocked with books that meet the needs of all students, knowing that the families in our district represent a variety of backgrounds, religions, and ethnicities. Every family operates differently, different values, different parenting styles, different personal opinions on the content that they believe their children should be exposed to. What I feel is appropriate for my kids to read may be seen as wildly inappropriate by another parent, and that's okay. Because no child is ever expected to read any single book or every book in a school library. And students always have the choice to simply choose another book. Parental opinions should never dictate which books remain accessible to all students. While one book may not meet the needs of every student, it is important to leave that book on the shelf so that any student that may need it has access to it. Again, I am very grateful for the policies and procedures that our school system follows when books are challenged to review. And I expect and I trust that our Board of Education will always value intellectual freedom, ensuring that children have access to books that meet their specific needs. Thank you.
Last speaker will be Pam Gatlin.
On the forum of enlightenment and moving forward, I want to share my experiences over the last few weeks. I am an educator. I work with human trafficking victims and crisis intervention. According to the CDC, one in four children are assaulted, and you can imagine what it's like to see a child after they have been assaulted. As an educator, you must remember these threats are not threats on minors should be taken with urgency. On February twenty-first, a ninth-grade boy threatened, I'm going to rape your sister, and there's nothing you can do about it. His older brother, also a student at Grove City, came to my home later that day. I have it on video. Statistically, this is how it goes. Rape is about power. A child who feels powerless will do things to get attention, things that make them feel powerful. Rape is about power. They watch how the adults respond. When it is not addressed appropriately, they keep testing their limits with this newfound power. They will say it again and again. Bad attention is better than no attention. Eventually, the threat will turn into action if this child has already not tried to test his limits with unexpected girls. Even you, Mr. Bosso, agree that if a person can say it, they can do it. Once the assault has occurred, there's no turning back. Trauma follows for both children. So the next day, on February twenty-second, I spoke with Vice President Todd and gave him the name of two witnesses. An hour later, Officer Petty called me. Mr. Todd had not provided him those names. After our conversation, they interviewed one. Full disclosure, the one they did interview recanted his story. He's a child who probably got scared about the exposure, and that's okay, because I'm scared standing up here. The other witness, the one that the school did not speak to, he's on the police report. He did not recant. On February twenty-second, I also emailed Mr. O'Shea, and I did not get a response. My email started with a reminder that Mr. Shea called me personally in November to discuss the dangerous subculture of harassment and bullying that he is not privy to. I started my own research. I learned from other parents that April twenty-fourth is considered National Rape Day and Grove City students post videos that would be criminal if reported to the police. I heard other stories of children being harassed, touching appropriately and called vulgar names, because when a school system is complicit, the parents band together. We find our allies. We teach our children how to cope, and some, like my children, they stand up, they fight back, and they're punished for it. On April tenth, remember, this happened on February twenty-first. Or on March tenth, I spoke with Mr. Bosso on the phone. It's documented in an email sent to all of you board members. He was polite, but ultimately, there was no concrete actions given to rectify the threat. He was polite, but ultimately there was no concrete actions given to rectify the threat. And three things that I want to point out, Mr. Bozo, from that email. You called me hun instead of my name. You stated, "Boys will do what they do." You credited the school's dress code as to be problematic in these situations. Ultimately, my goal today is concrete. First, I'm documenting this incident and process for future reference, because ultimately, with no intervention, this child will escalate, and this will serve as your first notice. Secondly, I hope you act on your responsibility to have a conversation about how you're going to move forward. The old ways are not working. My child is going to school with a boy who threatened to rape her, and no one has spoke to him. I could give you a few more examples of things that we've experienced, such as her, when she broke up with her boyfriend after two weeks, her, his friends surrounded her at lunch and called her the B-word, boys in the locker room laughing about girls doing sexual things to them, boys touching girls inappropriately and running away, joke sarcasm about vulnerable children. And lastly, adults that don't make change. You have a responsibility to your district to have a conversation about how we're moving forward and an opportunity to make that change today. There are a lot of reputable organizations to bring into this conversation and do training in your district, organizations with high regard.
That's good. That's your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's move to items for discussion. Any, I like for the board to say. I I have a couple that I just want to go over real quick. Um this past week, the High School Board Association Regional Spring Conference, uh Mr. Shriner, Vice President, was recognized for ten years of board service, so I just want to recognize him for ten years of service to our district. Um this past weekend, the Westland Area Business Association held their uh annual charity auction for the first time in a long time uh because of COVID and a variety of other factors, and um a lot of the money that was raised there is going to go to benefit scholarships for our students in our district. And so we appreciate the work of Wawa. Uh and then I meant to mention this earlier, uh when Kelly was giving her report, but uh the Grove City Band Bazaar, I went to it over the weekend. It was great, and I just thank the community for coming out and supporting our band, uh that great activity uh that they do to help fund the program. So those are the things that I had and wanted to report out on. Um hearing none other, uh except a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I'll say.
Second, roll call please. Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Shriner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Uh be safe.